Jaya Advaita Chandra, Jaya Gaurav Bhakta Prabhu. Jagat Mangala Advaita, Mangala Guratham. Mangala Charitra Shada, Mangala Charana.
So wish everyone a very, very happy Sri Advaita Saptami. The Divine Appearance Day of Sri Advaita Acharya Thakur Mahashay. So if we, we'll start a slide session on Sri Advaita Acharya. And after a few minutes, we will start a quiz session. Where there are fourteen questions. And through these quiz sessions, which you can answer via a poll, via the Zoom poll. And through these fourteen questions, we will then explore the life of Sri Advaita Acharya. After a few questions, we'll again switch to slideshow. Where we'll explain a little bit more about Sri Advaita Acharya's pastimes. In relation to those previous quiz questions. Then we go back to quiz questions and go forward, forward and backward like this. In a wonderful, interactive way.
So in today's session, we will describe the transcendental treasure trove of the divine glories of Sri Advaita Acharya Prabhu. We'll talk about his appearance and some of his very sweet pastimes. And we will conclude the session with a very meaningful prayer to Sri Advaita Acharya. And we will begin with the benefits which we derive. By listening to the glories of this divine personality, Sri Advaita Acharya Prabhu.
So it is said that anyone who hears about and glorifies Sri Advaita Acharya. Becomes glorified himself because such activities. Free one from all these different kinds of misfortune. It is said that here we can learn how we are. Are the purpose of our life is to actually glorify the Supreme Personality of God and his devotees. That is the innermost desire of the soul. So even though we may not want, we may not sometimes feel like glorifying the Lord. Many times we want to spend time in glorifying ourselves. But instead of that, if we can glorify the Supreme Lord. Then slowly and steadily, that pure love of God will come, come out and reveal itself. So as a practice and as a way to please the Lord. As a way to practice what the soul really wants. We must glorify the Supreme Personality of God and his devotees. And who is more merciful than Sri Advaita Acharya? All glories to such supremely merciful Advaita Acharya. As you can see, he's having a wonderful abhishek. Whoever takes shelter of his lotus feet will obtain the greatest gift of Sri Gaurav Prema.
Jai Sri Gaurav Mahaprabhu Ki, Jai Sri Advaita Goswami Ki, Jai. So Shula Krishnas Kabiraj Goswami in his Sri Chaitanya Charita Amrita. In Adi Lila Chapter Six, very beautifully he describes about Sri Advaita Acharya Prabhu. He says.
Mahavishnu Jagat Kartaa Maya Ya Ya Shtrijat Yada. Tasya Vata Rahe Maya, Advaita Acharya Ishvara. Lord Advaita Acharya is the incarnation of Mahavishnu. Whose main function is to create the cosmic world through the actions of Maya.
Hare Krishna.
Jagat Mangala Advaita, Mangala Guratham. Mangala Charitra Shada, Mangala Charana.
Being a reservoir of all auspicious attributes. Sri Advaita Acharya is all auspicious for the world. His characteristics, his activities and his name are always auspicious. So what are some of the benefits that we derive? By listening to the glories and to the pastimes of Sri Advaita Acharya Prabhu? Let us see what Shula Krishnas Kabiraj Goswami says in this regard.
Here, he says, anyone who hears and glorifies Sri Advaita Acharya. He becomes glorified himself. Because such activities free one from all kinds of misfortune. Whoever takes shelter at his lotus feet will attain Gaurav Prema. Love of Sri Gauranga Mahaprabhu Ki, Jai. In fact, just by thinking about Advaita Acharya Prabhu. It is said one will be blessed by true happiness, true bliss. The bliss of the soul, simply by thinking about Sri Advaita Acharya Prabhu Ki, Jai. So today on his auspicious day, we pray to Sri Advaita Acharya to please. Bless us with true happiness and bless us with the determination and spiritual strength. To do our sadhana properly, wake up early in the morning and follow Shula Prabhu Pad's instructions.
Hare Krishna Acharya Prabhu Ki, Jai.
Sri Advaita Acharya Prabhu, he invited, he petitioned, begged. The Supreme Personality of God had to appear in this material world with that intensity. It is said that we must chant the holy names such that the. Intensity of our chanting of the holy names actually pierces through all the seven coverings of this material universe. And reaches to the spiritual sky. And petitions to the heart of the Lord, please engage us in your loving devotional service. Please relieve us from this service of Maya and the service and this desire for sense gratification. These are the, these are the prayers that we must chant while chanting the holy names. We pray while chanting the holy names. Sri Advaita Acharya, he wanted to deliver the entire world. So we pray for the blessings of Sri Advaita Acharya to allow us to engage in his mission. In the mission of Sri Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, which he initiated by inviting, petitioning Sri Gauranga Mahaprabhu.
Hare Hare. So now we will start the first quiz question. So now it's time for interaction, those of you who are on Zoom. We request if the, all the Zoom participants can please, when the poll starts, please do participate. And so that we can share your answers. So Prem Vikas Prabhu, may we request you to please post the first quiz question for today.
So the first quiz question is, what is the year of appearance of Sri Advaita Acharya? Is it fourteen eighty-six, fourteen seventy-four, fourteen thirty-four or fourteen forty-four?
We're not able to see the question, okay. Okay, so we can.
So it says that are eighteen percent of the, of you who have participated. Now let's increase to twenty-two percent, please increase the persons of your participation. And we can then end this poll and know the right answer.
Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare.
Some of you are saying fourteen eighty-six, some fourteen seventy-four, some fourteen thirty-four. No one has said fourteen forty-four, we'll find out what the correct answer is.
Okay, so we can end the poll here. Anyone who would like to speak the right answer? We can share the results, yes please?
Hare Krishna Mataji.
Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna.
Yeah, it is fourteen thirty-four Mataji, already one person told it, I missed it, one of the devotee also told it.
Yes, so about eighteen percent of you said fourteen eighty-six, forty-five percent said fourteen seventy-four. And thirty-six percent said fourteen thirty-four.
Hare Krishna.
So even though most of you felt it's fourteen seventy-four, the correct answer is fourteen thirty-four. This is fifty-two years before Sri Gauranga Mahaprabhu appeared. He appeared in fourteen eighty-six and fifty-two years before. In fourteen thirty-four, Sri Advaita Acharya appeared. That means when Sri Gauranga Mahaprabhu was born, Sri Advaita Acharya was fifty-two years old.
Hare Krishna. So we can end the quiz session, sorry, we can go to the second quiz question please. The second quiz question please. Okay, what is the names of the parents of Sri Advaita Acharya Prabhu? Your choices are Sri Jagannath Mishra and Sachidhavi. Second, Sri Haday Pandit and Padmavati Devi. Third, Sri Kubera Pandit and Navha Devi. Four, Sri Madhava Mishra and Ratnavali Devi. So we'll chant one Hare Krishna mantra for you all to fill out the poll. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare.
Alright, we can end the poll here. So most of you said Sri Kubera Pandit and Navha Devi and ten percent said Sri Madhava Mishra and Ratnavati Devi. So the correct answer is, we can share the results. Is Sri Kubera Pandit and Navha Devi, yes, so most of you got that correct. Of course Sri Jagannath Mishra and Sachidhavi, the parents of Sri Gauranga Mahaprabhu. Sri Haday Pandit and Padmavati are parents of Nityananda Prabhu. Sri Kubera Pandit and Navha Devi are parents of Sri Advaita Acharya. Sri Madhava Mishra and Ratnavati Devi are actually parents of Sri Kadakhad Pandit.
Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna.
So the correct answer is Sri Kubera Pandit and Navha Devi.
Hare Hare.
Okay, we go to the next question. What is the name of the village Sri Advaita Acharya appeared? Did he appeared in Sri Mayapur, Sri Shantipur, Navagram or Shaktagram?
Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare.
So we can end the poll here.
Anyone would like to give the answer to this third question? Anyone?
Hare Krishna Mataji Dandak Pranam.
Hare Krishna.
I think Mataji it is Navagram because Advaita Acharya had a house also in Shantipur and needs to. Preach there in Shantipur, but he was born in Navagram.
Wonderful.
Okay, that's correct, yes. The correct answer is Navagram, that's, that's in Bangladesh, today's Bangladesh. At that time Bangladesh was also in India, so it was East Bengal. Shri Vas Pandit, Haridas Thakur, all of them are from actually appeared in Bangladesh. So there are a lot of holy sites in Bangladesh. But then they moved to West Bengal near Nadia and Shantipur, Advaita Acharya moved there. So thirteen percent of you said that Advaita Acharya appeared in Mayapur house. And forty-seven percent said Shantipur, I think you got confused.
Shantipur is actually one of the Bhajan Kuti, so the place where Sri Advaita Acharya Prabhu used to stay. Along with Shula Haridas Thakur, he would stay in Shantipur.
And even today, eternally, he stays there. And then thirty-three percent of you said the correct answer Navagram. Seven percent said Shaktagram, we don't know what Shaktagram is, but anyway, that's good.
Okay, so Sri Bhakti Ratnakar, in regards to the appearance of Sri Advaita Acharya. Um, the Bhakti Ratnakar states that when Navha Devi, when she gave birth to the illustrious child. Very quietly, Sri Kubera Pandit, the father approached the maternity room to get a glimpse, to take a glimpse of the newborn son. Then his own face began to shine by the reflection. Of the light that was coming out of the moonlight personality, who was lying very peacefully as an accultured baby. Who appeared to be like the most beautiful and the delicate child.
Just then, all the residents of Navagram, they came running to see the child. And everyone said, we've never seen such a beautiful baby. They said, what pious activities his father Kubera Pandit must have performed to get such a jewel of a son.
Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Acharya Ki, Jai. Sri Kubera Pandit, Sri Navha Devi Ki, Jai. Okay, so moving on to the fourth question please. Question number four. The question is, how long did Sri Advaita Acharya perform his pastimes in this material world? Your options are forty-eight years, sixty-five years, a hundred years or a hundred and twenty-five years? Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Please don't get confused, again the question is, how long did Sri Advaita Acharya participate? And perform his pastimes in this material world, not what was his age. So please be mindful.
Okay, so we can end the poll here.
We have.
Thirty-three percent say sixty-five years, eight person have said hundred years and fifty-eight person have said hundred twenty-five years. What do you think is the right answer, anyone?
Anybody volunteer?
Hare Krishna Mataji Prabhuji.
Hare Krishna.
Yes. Um, hi Krishna, I thought the answer was one twenty-five years, I'm not sure if that's right, but I think that's my guess, so.
Very good guess, your answer is right.
Yes, he was here for twenty-five years. So he came fifty-two years before Sri Gauranga Mahaprabhu. And he stayed twenty-five years after Sri Gauranga Mahaprabhu left this material world.
Hare Krishna. Okay, so moving on to the question number five. Please tell us, what is one of the names of Sri Advaita Acharya Prabhu? Which is related to auspicious? Your choices are Kamalaksha, Shubha, Mangala, Anukula. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare.
So we can end the poll here. And about eight percent of you said Kamalaksha, twenty-three percent of you said Shupha. And thirty-four percent said Mangala, fifteen percent said Anukula. And anyone share what your answer was? Or the correct answer could be?
Hare Krishna Prabhu, it will be Mangala, Mangala is.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Kamalaksha and Shubha, Mangala, Anukula. Mangala is the name which means auspicious, Mangala is the name of Sri Advaita Acharya, which means auspicious. Shubha and Anukula also mean auspicious, but those are not the names of Sri Advaita Acharya. Good.
So what does auspiciousness mean? You know, it actually is explained that it means true happiness. So Sri Advaita Acharya Prabhu, he is described herein as Mangala, which means all auspicious. So therefore, just by thinking about Sri Advaita Acharya Mahashay. We will be blessed with true happiness. Jai Sri Advaita Acharya Mangala Ki, Jai.
Next question, next poll. What is the meaning of Sri Advaita Acharya? One who is auspicious, one who has lotus eyes. One without a second and a teacher who teaches by example, or one who teaches by example?
Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare.
Okay, so we end the poll here. And let's look at the results. Yes, so twenty-nine percent of you said Advaita Acharya means one who is auspicious. No one said one with lotus eyes. Forty-three percent said one without a second and a teacher who teaches by example. And twenty-nine percent said one who teaches by example. Anyone like to share your correct answer?
Hi Krishna Mataji. Hi Krishna Mataji, I actually, I actually don't know, but I, I think it's like one who teaches by example.
Okay, your answer is half right, you are not wrong, you are right.
But it's half correct, because Acharya means one who teaches by example. But Advaita Acharya is, means, Advaita means one without a second. And Acharya means a teacher who teaches by example. So the third answer is the correct answer, full answer. The fourth answer is half answer.
That is a trick question Bitter, but you did great, thank you so much Ganiva. Thank you Bitter, and so Advaita means that he is non-different from Sri Hari. That's also another meaning of Advaita. That he is the Supreme Lord and Acharya of course means one who teaches by his own example. So Sri Advaita Acharya Prabhu, who is an incarnation of Mahavishnu. Is an Acharya or a teacher because he is non-different from Sri Hari, the Supreme Lord. And he is called as Advaita because he propagates the cult of devotion. And that's why he is, and because he also follows it in his life and he teaches the same, that's why he's called as Acharya. And he is the Supreme Personality of God and as at the same time, he is the incarnation of the Lord's devotee also.
In fact, if we see all the activities of the Lord, all these activities of Sri Advaita Acharya. Are auspicious. And anyone who can view this all auspiciousness. In, in the pastimes of Vishnu, also becomes auspicious everything is. So since Lord Vishnu is the fountainhead of auspiciousness. Therefore, anyone who is attracted by the devotional service of Vishnu. He can actually render the greatest service to the human society.
Hare Krishna.
Okay, we go to our seventh question. Advaita Acharya Prabhu, next question please. Advaita Acharya Prabhu is a combination of, is it Mahavishnu and Chirodakshay Vishnu? Sadashiva and Shambhu? Mahavishnu and Sadashiva or Vishnu and Shiva?
Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. So anyone with the right answer?
Well, let's end the poll here first.
Mataji, I know this answer, it's a Mahavishnu and Sadashiva.
Very good Ganiva, thank you Bitter, thank you.
Yes, and so fifteen percent of you did say Mahavishnu and Chirodakshay Vishnu. And six, most of you, sixty-nine percent Mahavishnu and Sadashiva, which is the right answer. Fifteen percent of you said Vishnu and Shiva, which is not correct. But. Let's look at some understanding of this particular. So we see here that Advaita Acharya is in the middle. And. Sadashiva is on our left-hand side and Mahavishnu is on our right-hand side. The combination of Mahavishnu and Sadashiva is Sri Advaita Acharya. Sadashiva is the original Shiva in the spiritual world. And Mahavishnu is the original Vishnu in the material world. So combination of those is Sri Advaita Acharya. So he is Vishnu Tattva, Shiva Tattva combined.
Okay, we'll move to the next question. Question number eight. What are the names given to Advaita Acharya Prabhu when he appeared? Your choices are Kamalaksha and Advaita. Second Kamalaksha and Mangala. Third Mangala and Prema and Padmaksha and Shupha. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Okay, so let's see how many people have said percentages on the quiz. So for Kamalaksha and Advaita, we have thirty-three percentage. Kamalaksha and Mangala is fifty-eight percent. Mangala and Prema is eight percent. And we had no choices for Padmaksha and Shubha, anyone would like to share your answers? Anyone? What could be the right answer? Anyone would like to share?
Okay, so the correct answer is Kamalaksha and Mangala, which most of you got that right. Kamalaksha Advaita is the name of Advaita Acharya, but it was not given when he was born. The name Advaita was given to him by his spiritual master and that takes us to the next question.
And Kamalaksha, if the name actually means that, Kamalaksha means that, you know, his eyes are like lotus. That is how Kamalaksha is the name, meaning of the name Kamalaksha. One who has beautiful lotus-like eyes. Okay, question number nine please. What is another name of Sri Advaita Acharya Prabhu in relation to Sri Gauranga Mahaprabhu? Your choices are Gauranandana Acharya, Gaurana Thakur. Gaurav Prema Acharya, Gaurakaruna Thakur. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare.
So we can end the poll here. And twenty percent of you said Gauranandana Acharya, twenty-three percent said Gaurana Thakur. Twenty percent said Gaurav Prema Acharya and thirty percent said Gaurakaruna Thakur.
Hare Krishna.
Would you like to share what the correct name is?
So the correct name is Gaurana Thakur. Which means Gaurah means Lotchetanya. Ana in Bengali means one who has brought, one who has brought Gaurah. Thakur of course means the Lord. So the Lord who has brought Sri Gauranga Mahaprabhu to this world is Sri Advaita Acharya Prabhu.
All the other names are made up names, Gauranandana Acharya, Gaurav Prema Acharya, Gaurthramathakur have made up names. But he's known as Gaurana Thakur.
Okay, so we will see the slides. So Sri Advaita Acharya Prabhu, he is also known as Gaurana Thakur. Which means he who has brought Sri Gaurahari to this world. And Advaita Acharya Prabhu, he prayed very, very fervently to the Lord for several months. He worshipped his Shalagram Shilas lovingly.
With, with Tulsi, as you can see, near Ganges water in Sri Advaita Acharya is praying to Sri Goranga Mahaprabhu. Praying to the Lord, praying to the Shalagram Shilas. And with Tulsi, he is offering Tulsi to Shalagram Shila and Ganga water. And he is calling out to the Lord, please, please, manifest yourself and show a way to this, the worldly people to reach the eternal spiritual abode because at that time, Sri Advaita Acharya was seeing that the Sri Mayapur Dharm and wherever he was staying, all these different places is filled with smart Brahmanas who were, even if they were doing any Vedic, following the Vedic system, they were actually doing it for their own sense gratification. And no one was interested in actually chanting the holy names of the Lord. No one. And Advaita Acharya along with, was, along with a few Vaishnavas. Advaita Acharya was the leader of the Vaishnavas in Sri Mayapur Dharm in Nadia at that time. And Advaita Acharya, with a few Vaishnavas, they were chanting the holy names, but no one else was chanting, no one was listening to them. No one was even interested in hearing the, the glories of the holy names. So he then said, being the leader of the Vaishnavas, he said, I cannot, I cannot induce these people to chant, but these people have to chant. Otherwise, this whole world will be overcome by darkness and dark forces. And so he said, I cannot do it, my Lord, only you can do it. So for our benefit, he prays intensely, so intensely with so much love and intensity that it brought, it changed the heart of the Lord and he came as Sri Chaitanya Mahaprabhu.
Krishna, it said that Krishna was very happily playing his flute in Golokavir Dhan. And the humkara, the loud cries of Sri Advaita Acharya Prabhu, it penetrated the, all the layers of the universe. And it reached the spiritual planet. It reached the Vaikuntalokas and it went even beyond the Vaikuntalokas to, all the way to Sri Golokavir Dhan. And that cry, that loving cry of Sri Advaita Acharya Prabhu is said to have interrupted, Krishna stopped playing his flute. And Shrimati Ratha Rani was right next to him. And Krishna said that I will have to come. I will have to come and I have to see what Sri Advaita Acharya Prabhu is crying for. So therefore Krishna, taking on the mood of his most beloved devotee, Shrimati Ratha Rani, he appeared as Sri Goranga Mahaprabhu. So we can continue with the next quiz question, question number ten. Who is the spiritual master of Sri Advaita Acharya?
Is it Ishwarapuri or Sri Madhavendrapuri, Ramachandra Puri or Lord Nityananda?
Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. I'm sorry, I made a mistake.
Okay, so the answer is, here thirty-three percent of you said Ishwarapuri and sixty-seven percent said Madhavendrapuri. So there are, so the correct answer, would anyone want to share?
Madhavendrapuri.
Yes, Sri Madhavendrapuri is the spiritual master of Sri Advaita Acharya. Ishwarapuri is the god brother of Sri Advaita Acharya. Because Ishwarapuri spiritual master is also Madhavendrapuri. Lord Nityananda spiritual master is also Madhavendrapuri. And Ishwarapuri, Sri Advaita Acharya and Lord Nityananda, all three were disciples of
Madhavendrapuri. So we can see a few pictures of who this personality, Sri Madhavendrapuri is. You see, Sri Madhavendrapuri, it is said that when Kubera Pandit and Navadavi, the divine parents of Sri Advaita Acharya, when they left this world, Advaita Acharya Prabhu came to Gaia to perform their Pindadan ceremony. And then he continued on a pilgrimage tour of the holy places in India. And during this pilgrimage, he met Shri Madhavendrapuri and received initiation from him. And at this time, when he received initiation, he was given the name Sri Advaita. Sri Advaita was the name that he received from Sri Madhavendrapuri. And this is Sri Madhavendrapuri. And Madhavendrapuri is such a wonderful and a great devotee of the supreme personality of Godhead that Krishna personally would come every day and he would bring a, a pot of buttermilk for Madhavendrapuri to drink. This is the level of devotion of Sri Madhavendrapuri. And also of course, Madhavendrapuri discovered Sri Gopal deity in, who was buried under in near Govardhan. And then Madhavendrapuri was also the same personality when this same Gopal deity appeared to Madhavendrapuri in a dream saying that, I'm very, feeling very hot, Madhavendrapuri. So please go to Ramuna, go there and get for me the nice Malaya Chandan, the sandalwood from there so that if, if I apply it, then I'll feel very nice and cool, cool, cool. So this was the relationship that Sri Madhavendrapuri has with Krishna. And he was the first devotee in our Sampradaya who actually expressed the mahabhaav of Shrimati Ratha Rani is Madhavendrapuri. Who is the grand spiritual master of Lord Chaitanya. And Madhavendrapuri is a very, 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 very special personality.
In fact, on, on the name of Madhavendrapuri, there is a place in Vrindavan called Jatipur.
Hare.
Pura means the place, Jati means a monk. And that monk was no other than Sri Madhavendrapuri. And this is where Gopal ji was, was found by Sri Madhavendrapuri. And the same Gopal ji from Jatipur, he was moved to Nathadwar. And he is now known as Sri Nath ji. Sri Nath ji is none other than the Gopal that Sri Madhavendrapuri discovered in Jatipur.
Hare. Okay, so we can move on to the next question, question number eleven. What is the name of the deity that Sri Advaita Acharya Prabhu found in Sri Vrindavan Dharm? Your options are Sri Raman, Sri Madan Mohan, Sri Govinda and Sri Gopinath. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare.
Okay, we can end the poll. I guess several of you saw the slide that I mistakenly went to, the next slide. So what is the right answer?
Anyone?
Share?
Hare Krishna, Madan Mohan.
Madan Mohan, yes. Sri Madan Mohan was the deity that Advaita Acharya found in Sri Vrindavan Dharm.
Okay.
Next question.
Next question, please. What was the name of the devotee who was given the deity of Sri Madan Mohan by Sri Advaita Acharya? Your options are Chobe ji, Pandei ji, Agresenji and Maheshwari ji. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna. So we have seventy percent of all these who said Chobe ji. Pandei ji was by twenty percent. No one chose Agresenji, but Maheshwari ji was by ten percent. So, anyone would like to give us the right answer? Hare Krishna. Huh?
Chobe ji.
Chobe ji. Okay, the answer is Chobe ji, the correct answer is Chobe ji. Bless you. Okay, so question number thirteen. From where was the devotee who was handed over this worship of Madan Mohan? Was he from Vrindavan, Mathura, Gobardhan or Jatipur? Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare.
Mataji, was it Vrindavan? Because I think he handed over the deities to Sanathan Goswami. Is that right?
He handed the deity, well, Advaita Acharya Prabhu, he handed the deity to Chobe ji.
Hmm.
So the story is coming later, but the story is coming in a short while.
Chobe ji was from, who would like to share? Twenty percent of you said from Vrindavan, forty percent Mathura, thirty percent Govardhan, ten percent Jatipur.
So anyone for the right answer?
Mathura, I think so because Chobe ji stayed in Mathura.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mathura is the right answer. So, actually it is said that after receiving initiation, Sri Advaita Acharya, he came to Vrindavan and he absorbed himself in the worship of Sri Krishna. And that is where the deity of Sri Madan Mohan appeared to Sri Advaita Acharya Prabhu. This is the original deity of Sri Madan Mohan Jyoti Jai. He is now residing in a place called Karoli, which is near Jaipur. And this Madan Mohan deity in Advaita Acharya, he could not stay in Vrindavan and take care of, you know, Madan Mohan deity. So what he did is that he knew a wonderful Brahmana devotee, a Vaishnava Brahmana in Mathura, who was named as Chobe ji. He was a very, very wonderful devout Bhagwatham speaker. He would, you know, recite the Bhagwatham, Shrimad Bhagwatham with great care and attention. And Sri Advaita Acharya Prabhu was very, very, you know, they would always get together. Advaita Acharya Prabhu would visit Mathura and stay in Chobe ji's house. So before leaving Vrindavan, Advaita Acharya Prabhu thought that Chobe ji is the right recipient to continue the worship of Sri Madan Mohan. But when Sri Advaita Acharya Prabhu handed over Madan Mohan deity to Sri Chobe ji, at that time, Madan Mohan, he started feeling intense separation from Advaita Acharya. And Advaita Acharya Prabhu also started feeling very, very intense separation from Madan Mohan. So Advaita Acharya Prabhu captured Madan Mohan in his heart and brought him back to Bengal. He brought him back to the, to his place near Shantipur. And when Madan Mohan left Vrindavan in the heart of Sri Advaita Acharya, he manifested in Bengal as the deity called as Madan Gopal. So Madan Mohan, the same deity in Bengal as is worshiped by Sri Advaita Acharya Prabhu is the Madan Gopal deity. So this way, Chobe ji, he continued, you know, worshipping Madan Mohan ji as, you know, he became like part of the family of Chobe ji. And Sanathan Goswami now, he, when he came years later, lot of many years later, when Sanathan Goswami came to Vrindavan, Sanathan Goswami would go around doing Mathukari to every place he would go around. And he came to Mathura one day and he came and he came to this home of Sri Chobe ji. And he was so attracted to the deity of Madan Mohan that he couldn't take his eyes off of Madan Mohan. And Chobe ji was so good in speaking Shrimad Bhagwatham, doing Bhagwatham Kathas that Sanathan Goswami would, every day he would, you know, make excuses so that he comes to Chobe ji's house to listen to Bhagwatham, but most importantly to see Madan Mohan. So one day, Sanathan Goswami and Chobe ji, they were sitting and discussing Shrimad Bhagwatham. And suddenly the son of Chobe ji, young son of Chobe ji, he came running to his father and he said, Baba, Baba, look, this Madan Mohan, you gave me this ladu and this Madan Mohan is saying he wants this ladu. So then Madan Mohan also came running, the deity himself came running, he said, oh Baba, look, he's not giving me ladu. He's speaking like this with Chobe ji. The deity. So hearing this and witnessing this, Sanathan Goswami became mesmerized that what is happening? So and Chobe ji was very cool about it and he said, oh, don't fight like this, I said, Laro ma, don't fight like this, both of you. So Chobe ji took the ladu and he divided it into two parts and he said, here Lala, one is for you. And he gave one to Madan Mohan and he said, here Mohan, one for you, half for you. So both of you, don't fight, you play nicely. And Sanathan Goswami was totally petrified that what's happening? How can the deity talk like this? How can the deity be playing like this? So that increased the attraction of Sri Sanathan Goswami father. He would keep coming every day to see the beautiful deity of Sri Madan Mohan. And one day, Madan Mohan told Chobe ji that you know that, that Goswami Baba who comes every day, that Sanathan, I want to go with him, please, please, I stayed with you for so long, now I want to go to Vrindavan. So please, you send me with him. And then Chobe ji said, nee nee, Lala, see, how you can go? That Baba ji, he himself, he stays on Mathukari, means he begs for food. What will he eat? And he doesn't have any place that he stays in one place. He goes around begging for food. And if he's got no thing for eating, how can he feed you? Here, you're at least getting to eat. Where will you stay? Where will you eat? No, 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 you cannot go. But then Madan Mohan started crying, no, 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 please, I want to go, please, I want to go with this Goswami Baba, I want to go with this Baba ji Maharaja, I want to go, please, please, send me. So the next day when Sanathan came, at that time, Chobe ji said to Sanathan Goswami that, look, my Lala is crying so much that he wants to go with you to Vrindavan. What to do? Sanathan Goswami said, no, 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 no. I am a, you know, Mathukari Brahmana, how I live on by begging? What will I feed him? He is, he is to Chappan Bhog here, so much opulent food here, I will not be able to give. Then Madan Mohan said, Sanathan, I don't want anything. You, whatever you eat, you give me that only. Don't worry, I will just, you just take me with you. Sanathan said, well, I live under a tree. You will stay under tree, no problem? Said, no problem, wherever you stay, I will stay with you. So then, seeing the eagerness of Madan Mohan, Krishna, at that time, Sanathan Goswami said, okay, come with me, let's go. And then holding on to the hand of Sanathan Goswami, Madan Mohan walked from Mathura and he came to Vrindavan. And every day, Sanathan Goswami, he would collect Mathukari, means by begging, he would get some wheat flour. And with that wheat flour, he would mix Yamuna water. Yamuna water, if any of you have tasted, is very salty. Ganga water is sweet, but Yamuna's water is salty. So then with that Yamuna water, he would mix that wheat flour and he would make, you know, like ladus, like small, he would make a dough out of it and he would make small, small balls and he would just throw it into the fire. And then that would get burnt and that he would give to Madan Mohan and Madan Mohan or Madan Mohan, he left his Chappan Bhog and he came and he said, okay, I will not poor Madan Mohan, he left his Chappan Bho and he came and he said, okay, I will not complain, I will not complain. Whatever you eat, you give me. And then Madan Mohan would put his hand and Sanathan Goswami would put one of those burnt, um, you know, balls of wheat in his hand. And Madan Mohan would eat that. That is called till today, that is offered to Madan Mohan and that is called as Anakoli. It's very, very special deity. So one day Madan Mohan said, hey Sanathan, you're giving only wheat, at least put little more salt in it. Then Sanathan said, oh, see, I told you. Today you're asking for salt, tomorrow you'll ask for Asgulla, I can't give you, you go back to Chobeji. No, okay, 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 no, 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 I will not ask. But like this, but Madan Mohan, because he desired, a merchant came and he gifted some salt to uh, to Sanathan Goswami, a huge temple was constructed by a wonderful merchant. Madan Mohan Temple, even till today, even though after it was broken down, till today it stands as the tallest temple in Sri Vrindavan town. We can see it from, you know, before we crossed the Jamuna Bridge to come to Vrindavan, we can see the temple of Madan Mohan. So very, very glorious deity and this deity was found by Sri Advaita Acharya Prabhu.
In fact, Shri Chaitanya Mahap, Sri Advaita Acharya, he boldly declares, Chaitan Nira Dasa Muhii, Chaitan Nira Dasa, Chaitan Nira Dasa Muhii, Tara Dasa Rada.
Which means I am a servant of Lord Chaitanya, a servant of Lord Chaitanya, I am a servant of Lord Chaitanya and a servant of his wonderful servants. So this is how Sri Advaita Acharya Prabhu, his mood is that although he is Mahavisnu, although he is the supreme personality of Godhead, but he's still declaring himself to be the servant of Sri Chaitanya Mahaprabhu.
Acharya Charade Mora, Koti Namostha, Itse Kichho Apuradhana, Lalave Ama. I offer my obeisances ten billion times to the Lotus Feet of Sri Advaita Acharya. Here, these are the wonderful Lotus Feet of Sri Advaita Acharya with wonderful symptoms of the conch shell, the disc, fish and so many other auspicious symbol, symbols. Sri Advaita Acharya Ki, Sri Advaita Charan Ki.
Yeah. So we move on to the next quiz question, number fourteen. What are the two roles of Sadashiva in Gokul Vrindavan? Your options are, Gopishwar Mahadev and Gopa, Chintaharan Mahadev and Gopishwar Mahadev, Nandishwar and Kamishwar Mahadev, Gulmalata and Rangeshwar Mahadev. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare.
We can end the poll here. And so twenty-five percent of you said Gopishwar Mahadev and Gopa, fifty percent said Chintaharan Mahadev and Gopishwar Mahadev and twenty-five percent of you said Nandishwar and Tavishwar Mahadev. None of you said Gulmalata and Rangeshwar Mahadev. So, uh, would anyone like to share your answer?
Anyone? Any volunteers for the right answer?
I think the second one, Chandan Hara.
Okay.
Mahadev.
Chintaharan Mahadev and Gopishwar Mahadev, anyone else? The correct answer is the first one, Gopishwar Mahadev and Gopa. You see, what happens is that, um, there's a very wonderful, you know, sweet pastime, which is from the book, well, we'll, we'll talk about that later, but this is Gopishwar Mahadev, Shiva Shambhu, then Lord Shiva, he actually manifests as a Gopi to enter into the Rasadas. So he is the Kshetrapal who is protecting Sri Vrindavan town and there is Gopishwar Mahadev. So this is Gopishwar Mahadev.
And he also, uh, came as a Gopa.
So there's a very sweet pastime which is explained from the book named Goragandesh Dipika, where it says that in Braja, Sadashiva, which is Advaita Acharya Prabhu, he took the form of a coward boy and he danced alongside with Krishna. It is said that once on the day of Diwali in Kartik month, Sadashiva, he saw Krishna Balaram were dancing very nicely. They were very, very happily, they were dancing and becoming, you know, and desiring to become and to just participate in the dancing of Krishna Balaram. Sadashiva, Advaita Acharya Prabhu became a coward boy himself and he started dancing and spinning like a whirling wheel for the pleasure of Sri Gopal. So by Krishna's mercy, Sadashiva, he plays two roles in two different roles in Braja. One is of Gopishwar Mahadev and the second is of a Gopa. So we can see here how, we can see baby Lord Shiva cutely dressed as a Gopi and all the Gopis are feeling so happy. You see, who is this new Gopi who has come, who is so cute? And if you zoom in, you will see that there is, you know, Lord Shiva's moon, the half moon is also there. And this is little Lord Shiva in a red sari.
Now look, little, little Lord Shiva in the red sari.
Little Lord Shiva in the red sari, he is there, who is little Gopi, Gopishwar Mahadev.
And he just suddenly appeared in the Rasadas and all the Gopis are amazed at who this beautiful holy Gopi is. So innocent and they were welcoming him to the Rasadas area.
And then we can see here also that how Lord Shiva is dressed as a Gopi and enjoying his dance with Sri Krishna. So this is the way Lord Shiva, he manifests in Sri Vrindavan town um, and participates in the pastimes of Sri Shiraada and Krishna. So this is Sadashiva who is manifesting as Gopishwar Mahadev and a coward boy at the same time.
And uh, Chintaharan Mahadev is also there in Brajatam, but he is in Gokul. He's not in, uh, Vrindavan.
Yeah, Chintaharan Mahadev and then we also have Kamishwar Mahadev who is in Kamiapan. There is Rangeshwar Mahadev who is in Mathura. He was one of the Lord Shivas who was being worshipped by Kamsa himself, is Rangeshwar Mahadev. So like this, um, these are the different Mahadev, but Sadashiva is Gopishwar Mahadev. So now, we have actually come to the end of the quiz, but we would like to perclue with a few other quick points.
Especially about Shilaprahupad. He actually, Shilaprahupad started from India to embark to a journey in US to, to America. He wanted to come, he came to Boston from using a ship called Jaladuta. It's a cargo ship from Suryasitya Ship Company, uh, which was owned in Bombay, but which started from India, from Kolkata, from the Kolkata port. So, when he was about to leave, go from Kolkata, Shilaprahupad visited Shantipur during his Vastu days earlier in nineteen forties and fifties. And on the day before, uh, departing to USA on Jaladuta in nineteen sixty-five, he also visited Shantipur, where Sri Advaita Acharya used to stay and he came to take blessings from Sri Advaita Acharya. And the Pujari of Shantipur temple asked, who are you? I remember you coming for so many years, you used to come in nineteen forties, fifties and you've come again. So Shilaprahupad very humbly responded, my name is Abhaya Charanagavita Bhakti Vedanta Swami. I'm the disciple of an empowered soul, Shilabhakti Siddhanta Saraswati Thakur. And my Guru Dev has given me this impossible mission to perform. He has ordered me to take this message of Lord Chaitanya and the holy names of Krishna across the ocean to spread all over the world. In those days, the Suryasis were not supposed to cross the seven seas, the oceans. It was not proper because, you know, there's, there could be fall down, it could be a risk of a spiritual fall down and things like that. But Shilaprahupad, he did not, uh, care for any of this. Only thing he had was, ekay Hakunathana. Vevasayatika Gunthi, ekay Hakunathana. My only goal, life and mission is to fulfill the order of my spiritual master. And he said, I have no qualification, I have no ability. People in the Western name, they have never heard the name of Krishna or who is Radhani, how do I convince them? So for all these years I've been coming here because this is the place Shantipur, where Advaita Acharya, Lord Chaitanya, Lord Nityananda Prabhu, they are eternally present. And they are planning to take the holy names all over the world. Shilabhakti Siddhanta Saraswati Thakur comes in there, Parampara, he has given me the order, it must, that means it is the desire of Advaita Acharya, Lord Chaitanya, Lord Nityananda. So they can take the holy names, they can convince the people. And I've come here praying them to just use me as an instrument to empower me to fulfill my guru's order. Tomorrow, I'm taking this cargo ship to New York City. But I don't know what I will find there, I don't know how I will do it. So I'm crying to my guru dev and to supreme personality of Godhead to please empower me. And this is what we can learn from Shilaprahupad's life, that we have to beg for the blessings to, so that we can get the qualification, the humility to accept the blessings of the Lord. Everyone in this world is given the order to spread the mission of Sri Chaitanya Mahaprabhu. But those who are willing to accept it, it is very important that we accept the order. The blessings are there, we have to accept the blessings. And how we can accept the blessings if we can make ourselves humble? Understand, remind ourselves that I am lower than a blade of grass. And I'm, I'm much lower than all the lower animals. Whatever I have been given, let me be grateful for that. And I want to use whatever opportunities I have in glorifying the supreme personality of Godhead. This was the mood of Shilaprahupad. And this mood he maintains even after he had hundred and eight temples and all over the world temples were there, devotees were there. Still, he maintained the same mood, please, use me as an instrument and engage me in the service of the Lord.
Thank you. So, the Pujari, so Sri Shilaprahupad, he was crying at this place in Shantipur which is called as Babla. This very special temple there and Shilaprahupad was just crying and he was talking to the Pujari. And the Pujari heard him, gave him blessings, gave Shilaprahupad blessings. And then after that, few years passed by, that Pujari never saw Shilaprahupad. And then later in the seventies, this was in nineteen sixty-five and then later in the early seventies, a few devotees, they came and visited the temple of Shantipur and of Sri Advaita Acharya Prabhu. And they were all Shilaprahupad's dancing white elephants. The Western disciples of Shilaprahupad, Shilaprahupad would lovingly call them as his dancing white elephants. And they all came to this temple in Shantipur and they had different books and mostly they had the Back to God Ed magazine. And then, this Pujari of the temple, he was still there and he said, I know this man, I know this man, he was here the day before, where is he, where is he? And then they said, well, we are disciples of Shilaprahupad and he has established this wonderful international society for Krishna consciousness. The Hare Krishna movement has been established by him and we are all his followers. And then that Pujari actually narrated this story that how Shilaprahupad came the day before and he was the one who told the disciples this wonderful pastime. So how Shilaprahupad considered this place of Sri Shantipur to be the hub of where all the preaching generates from there? Because it is said that Lord Nityananda, Sri Goranga Mahaprabhu and Sri Advaita Acharya Prabhu, all these three personalities, they would sit in Shantipur and they would make plans for preaching, for distributing and for expanding the movement. So Shilaprahupad very appropriately, he would, he would, you know, pray so ardently to Sri Advaita Acharya. So on today's most auspicious day, the appearance day of Sri Advaita Acharya Prabhu, this most auspicious day, the day of Mangala, what should be our prayer to Sri Advaita Acharya?
Sri Advaita Acharya, as we learnt, he is the combination incarnation of Mahavisnu and Sadashiva. Sadashiva is the predominant deity of false ego. And so we can pray to Sri Advaita Acharya today, please my lord, I'm overly puffed up by my birth qualities and other unnecessary things that are in connection with this temporary body of mine. Please, please be merciful to me and purify my false ego and transform it into true ego. False ego is making me identify with the body. Transform into true ego so I can identify as being the servant of the servant of the servant of the Lord. Please allow me to develop my true ego that I am the eternal servant of my spiritual master. I'm just meant to be used as an instrument in his hands in the way he feels best and so that he can engage me in the most glorious mission of your lord and master, Sri Goranga Mahaprabhu. Sri Advaita Acharya Ki, Sri Goranga Mahaprabhu Ki, Shilaprahupad Ki. Itai Dor Sitanath Prevanandi. Ekane Doit Doit Tha, Om Nita Lahari, Bodam Dore Ekva, Bodam Dore Ekva. Okay, so we, before we end today's session, we'd like to, um, sing a wonderful song about Sri Chaitanya Mahaprabhu and Advaita Acharya and then we can take quick questions.
So there's a very small bhajan, it is called Sri Krishna Chaitanya Prabhu Dora Koramore. And, um, it is a song written by Sholana Arutam Das Thakur. Sri Krishna Chaitanya Prabhu. Dora Koramore. Doma Dina Ke Dora Na, Jamata Shal Shali. Poti Tha. Doma Ya Tha, Mushamapaa. Shita Prabhu, Na Payi Thera. Mahaprabhu, Nityananda, Prevaranda Churki. Tripa La, Konakor, Ami Boru Dukki. Dora Koram Shita Pati, Padayta Vashna. Tokli Pa, Marai Pa, Chaita La.